It is now approximately three o'clock somewhere.
Somewhere.
Welcome to the August 24th session of the Board of Library Trustees of the Allen County Public Library. Roll call, Ms. Tucker?
Present.
Mr. Williams?
Present.
Mr. Seibert?
Air.
I'm present, that's a quorum. All that being said, can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. If there are no objections, group the minutes for approval. Any objection?
So moved.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Approval of the minutes of regular session July 27th of 2023, of the executive session of July 27th, 2023. Minutes of approval of claims, August 11th of 2023. Minutes of the Finance and Personnel Committee meeting, August 15th of 2023. And minutes of the Capital Projects Executive Session, August 15th of 2023. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay, and it passes. David?
Thank you, Ben. Really, as far as the financial reports are concerned, there's only one line that's spending ahead of benchmark, and that's the consulting services line. It's not a huge line, it's got a $25,000 budget, and it's at $21,000 spent now. And that really is coming from, as I noted in the report, Petra Solutions. You know, they were the group that was hired to do the immigration and refugee work for the strategic plan. So if we need to move some money, and by the end of the year, we'll, you know, do that during the adjustment period. Other than that, all other lines are staying, you know, within their boundaries. As far as news and notes, as I've written up in the narrative there, the main thing is the budget. We had the FNP, Finance and Personnel Committee meeting last week, and we are currently working toward the Department of Local Government Finance meeting next Tuesday. Susan and I will be attending that, and based on that meeting, we will then move forward with all of the gateway filings and the public hearing. Just as a note, in your packet, I gave an updated calendar and timeline for the budget work, since we are going to have the public hearing in the September board meeting, as opposed to a separate meeting, so that we can have a quorum. And in a seminar yesterday with the DLGF, they really were stressing they wanted the quorum of board members. So it's a good thing we moved it to the regular board meeting, so that we'll have that. Other things going on, we did get, as in the FNP meeting, I had mentioned, we didn't have the lit X estimate. We did get that on Monday, and as I expected, it went up from 2023. Quite significant, quite actually, to $922,000 more. Went from 4.6 million to 9.5, or 5.5 million. So it's a terrible thing to have too much money that we have to spend, so. But we will be able to use that, as I had mentioned in that committee meeting, the amount of capital things that need to be done, the HVAC systems and things like that, are building up, and so it's a welcome amount of windfall that we'll have to put toward that. I think really that's about it. The only thing else to report is the Aboit roof. We are finally going to be starting work on that on September 4th, is when Jake, our maintenance, head of maintenance, is indicating they're going to start work on that. This is going to require the branch to be closed at least for a while, because they can't have staff or public in there while, you know, cranes are there lifting trusses off and things like that. They're anticipating about a six-week period that will be at least for the public side. We may be able to get staff in and be doing services like, you know,
Book drop.
Book drop and things like that. But we can't have public in there while that construction is going on in there, so.
Let me set up her side.
How did, did they decide? I think-
I don't think the parking lot would allow for it.
No, because the crane that has to be set up in there and everything, it's, it's going to be quite an extensive project.
How are we going to notify the patrons?
Well, they're already, I think, working on notifications.
We wanted to have this discussion tonight, and then Asha has a plan in place involving email blasts, media notifications, print notifications in the branch. It's going to be a real hardship for a lot of people, we know that, and there's not a lot of ways to get around it. We're also talking to Aboit staff about doing some outreach pop-up programming during that time, so at least that service can be continuous.
Would the bookmobile be some repository or help?
We've talked about how we could incorporate possibly library at home, filling in a need there, with some programming and things. I believe the nearest branch to Aboit would be Wayndale, which not, which isn't particularly close, to be quite honest, but that would be the most logical place. We're also going to be looking into how those holds for people can be delivered to other libraries, so they can be picked up.
Do we have to do anything special to protect the books, the materials inside while they're-
They'll be protected, they'll be wrapped in, you know, keeping, wrapping all that with discween and everything, and they'll move out as much as they can.
And will that cost be covered under the insurance claim, or is that something we have to endure?
Yeah, yeah. It would be, well, yes and no. There was always going to be a portion that we had to cover, but the bulk of this, we were anticipating about a $900,000 expenditure for this totally, $924,000. And then we did get the insurance covering about $800,000 on it, so.
Who's doing the work?
Well, there's a whole group of them. Kinder is the general contractor on it, but then Fort Wayne Roofing is doing the roofing part of it, and then there'll be, you know, obviously electric, electric work and HVAC work, so Kinder is doing the staging of all that. So, yeah, it, we've been holding off on this because we wanted to give them a chance to get through summer learning program and get that done, but we kind of got to really get on this before weather starts turning, because that whole roof is going to be coming off. And they'll secure it every night, but the last thing we need is a big windstorm on that, so. But we'll get by best we can.
I guess I have the other question, or the last question on that, and Susan, it's really toward you, it's about staff, and I'm sure there's a plan to rearrange or move around, or-
Absolutely, we will be deploying staff to other locations.
Okay.
And like I said, Jake has said that perhaps within a week, because it all depends on how much of the infrastructure has to be shut off, the HVAC, the electrical water. If they don't have to shut off too much of that, they might be able to then be able to allow staff into the front section, that they could still get to the workroom and work on things there. But if they have to pull the roof off, and they find that, no, all these leads and runs are having to be cut off, well, you can't really have them in there if they don't have those services.
Right.
Well, he said, we'll know within a week, once, you know, they start that, what kind of access they'll be able to have.
But that, if we can't operate there, it'll be reallocated to other facilities?
Yes, yes.
We don't lay anybody off?
No, no, not at all. We have work for everybody.
Okay.
Yep. So that's the main stuff on my report, but be glad to tackle any other questions.
Thanks for the news, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, at least we're going to get that done. It's been a long time waiting.
Well, then I'll entertain a motion that we approve the financial report as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And let's do the claims.
All right. Thanks. The claims today are 405,000, of which, with all our heat, you can imagine what the highest bill is, 66,000 for our system-wide electric. So, but the rest of it was all library materials.
Okay. Motion to approve the claims?
So moved.
And, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Well, they're coming around. Let's talk about our commitment.
Let's talk about that. So our August meeting is when we typically do our annual commitment to join the Indiana State Library Consortium for Public Library Internet Access. This allows us to be eligible to apply for E-rate discounts for our internet and telecommunications services. This results in about a 90% discount to fees, and over the years, this has literally saved the taxpayers millions of dollars. But we do have to make this annual commitment to join the consortium, so I'm asking for that tonight.
Are there, let's put that in the form of a motion. Can I have a motion to approve the commitment, and then a second?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Is there a discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, let's adjust the staffing table.
We'll talk about that. Dave, can I ask you, please, to circulate that as well?
Oh, we have to.
So they can sign under aye. Thank you so much.
I'll sign.
So, thank you, Ben. We come to you tonight with a request for an adjustment to our authorized staffing table. Our team knows that I typically do not like to come to the board mid-year for an adjustment. I really prefer for these adjustments to be done holistically, as part of our end-of-the-year review. However, sometimes situations necessitate a change in path, so this is why I'm coming to you today. We are asking for you to consider an adjustment to the staffing table that would reclassify the senior network specialist position, and that is an information technology position, which is at the P3 grade, professional 3, to a network services manager position, which is the M2 grade. And you have in your packet a draft job description for the network services manager. This would not involve hiring another staff member, this would reclassify a role currently filled by an employee named Mike Taggart, who's been with us since September of last year, who happens to be wonderful. Kim Boland and IT manager Kevin Wells, they have spent several months analyzing the flow of, the workflow of the IT department, particularly as it relates to our upcoming ILS migration. And we feel that due to the upcoming ILS migration, this is a step we need to take now versus wait until later. The adjustment in the title, classification of pay, is needed to better reflect the knowledge, skills, and abilities Mike brings to the IT department. His current salary is about $74,000. We estimate offering him approximately $84,000 in this new role, so that would be the cost differential. And you see in your grid there, the difference between a P3 position and an M2 position. And I'm happy to answer. Any additional questions?
Questions? Can I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Marty. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, we have the adjustment.
Great, thank you very much.
Next item is patron behavior policy.
The next three items are in concert with one another. We took our existing code of conduct policy, and there's been a staff group that's been working on this for, gosh, it seems like almost a year, since January, so, yeah, eight months, to look at our code of conduct and see what changes can and should be made. We also got some feedback from our social work intern Connor, that you met a few meetings ago. So what we have is basically, I would call it a deconstructed code of conduct policy. We separated it out into three pieces. One is a patron behavior policy. The second is a supervision of minors and at-risk adults policy, and the third is the firearms and dangerous weapons policy. All of these items were addressed in the code of conduct, but this separates them, makes them a bit more digestible and easier to understand and implement. One area that was particularly fleshed out was supervision of minors and at-risk adults. We didn't feel that we had that adequately addressed in our existing code of conduct, so this has it as a separate policy with some more specificity as to what that looks like and how it could be enforced. And I'm happy to go through each policy, or have you reviewed and have any questions?
Let's take each one separately?
Sure.
Okay.
The patron behavior policy, you're going to see their overall standards of behavior, and then you're going to see an itemized list of conduct and actions that are prohibited.
As a practical matter, how often have we referred to the patron behavior policy?
Daily.
Oh.
Yes, I mean, this is a critical piece that our staff, particularly our security officers, use when engaging with patrons and informing them about their behavior.
Got it. Do we have it posted, or do we give printouts, so we hand it to people and say, just, we believe you're not violating the policy, we'd like you to make sure you have a copy of it, and you need to adhere to this from now on?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Any further questions? All right, can I have a motion to approve the patron behavior policy effective today or tomorrow?
So moved.
Second, please.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All right.
Thank you. We'll move along to the supervision of minors and at-risk patrons. So this took a lot of staff research and input. We took best practices from around the country. There was a lot of discussion about what constitutes a child being old enough to be left in the library without supervision. There is not specific state law surrounding that, and as everybody knows, a 10-year-old looks different on every 10-year-old, right? But after all the research, we determined that 8 and younger is a good benchmark. So with this policy, children 8 and younger, along with at-risk minors and adults, must be in the immediate presence of a parent, guardian, or caregiver at all times when visiting ACPL. And a parent, guardian, or caregiver is responsible for monitoring the activities and behavior of their children, and the library acknowledges that children mature at different ages, and we have this policy in place, but also, there's always going to be a certain degree of judgment and discretion of our staff. We do have language in the policy. If you flip to the back, the last paragraph says enforcement of the policy will be conducted in a fair and reasonable manner, with ACPL staff seeking additional guidance from management and/or security staff when needed. We know that these situations involve a degree of nuance and degree of judgment, so we wanted to make sure that there were check guards and guidelines in place, so staff members could consult with higher-level staff members and/or security to make decisions on these issues. It does also say that if children are left at the library after closing hours, we do have the right and our discretion to contact the appropriate authorities.
Well, let me ask a question. Has this been the case? Do we have kids that are, they are left?
Yes.
Move for passage.
And a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the supervision of minors and at-risk patients revision policy, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, and that goes into effect tomorrow.
Thank you. Next up, I'll go ahead.
No.
Next up would be the firearms and dangerous weapons policy. And I should have said earlier, all of these policies were vetted by Pete at our legal team, and we received feedback from them on them. So the firearms and dangerous weapons piece, this was part of the larger code of conduct. We felt that it would be useful for our security team in particular, when they're enforcing these policies, to have it pulled out as its own separate policy, and this has been written in accordance with the changes in Indiana firearms law that went to effect last summer.
Okay, motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second? Thank you, second. Who wants a second?
Give me a moment.
Wouldn't anybody in the audience like to say?
I'll second for the vote.
Okay, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Abstention? It passes. Thank you so much, and this new policy will go into effect tomorrow.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
We have moved now to our update of the strategic plan.
Yes, thank you so much. So you may have seen an excellent article in the Journal Gazette this morning about our status of the strategic plan. You may have seen a piece on Wayne TV. Last time we were together, I mentioned that we had a survey out to our patrons. The survey closed a few weeks ago, and we had more than 8,500 responses. We were just blown away by that. To put some context to that, for the Chicago Public Library, their most recent strategic plan, they did a survey, and they had 16,000 responses, and we had 8,500. So that's pretty, pretty impressive. And we were really pleased at many of the things we learned on that survey. We learned that more than 88% of the respondents were likely or very likely to recommend the library to a family member, friend, or colleague, and that the vast majority of respondents rated the library as good or very good in many areas. The survey showed, and we knew this, but the survey really amplified it, that the library's physical collection of books and materials is still a key component of its purpose and value to the community, but it also proves that digital assets and programming and creating spaces for gathering are also critical pieces of our services. The survey had many, many comments, and those were sent out to you, and senior leadership spent a lot of time reviewing the survey findings and all the comments, as well as the findings that Arina and Andy spoke about last month with their presentation. I've told folks that from reading the survey, and particularly spending time in the comments, if someone has a strongly held opinion about how the library should operate or do something, I can promise you that there's someone who has the exact opposite opinion. And that diversity of perspective and opinion is a real strength and can also provide a challenge, but it's a challenge we're ready to take on. I truly believe we are in a place of yes and. Yes, we still want and value and cherish physical books, and we're going to still buy them, and they're not going away, and also, we can increase our digital holdings, because we've had requests for both, and there are just a myriad examples of that dichotomy in thought, but the good news is that we're approaching it from an abundance perspective. We can have all of that. We did get some specific feedback, and on some of those issues, I'm really pleased to say that we already have a plan to remedy it in the works, or it's actually already been done. We've received many comments in regards to our online catalog and our website, and that it needs improvement. And for anybody who said that, I want to let them know, you're right, we completely agree, and we are working feverishly on that now. We actually have in town all this week representatives from Polaris, that is the integrated library system that we chose to migrate toward, and we have started the process of staff training on that. Our launch date is going to be on Halloween, and we have so many staff members who, quite frankly, don't have the best work-life balance right now, because they are working so hard on making sure that this is a smooth rollout for our community, but I think everyone's going to be really, really excited when it's launched. I think it's going to prove a much more seamless, intuitive, user-friendly experience. And another improvement that we heard about on the survey that we implemented just last week, and I'm curious if Marty has noticed it yet, okay? We have raised the hold limit on Libby to 10. Yeah, right?
Oh, you want to leave the meeting and go to no.
That was an easy, low-hanging fruit, if you will. We had that comment, and we said, yeah, we should do that. So now that matches the current number of checkouts on Libby, as well as the hold limit for print items. So we're excited to make that fix for everybody. So we have taken the findings and the feedback received from all the sources to develop a draft framework for the strategic plan. We're not asking for a vote tonight. What we're asking for is a check-in to see if you think we're on the right track, to get your comments and your edits, and then we hope to bring it back to you in a more fleshed-out form with objectives and metrics at either the September or the October meeting. And you have a copy of that framework in your packet. Mission, which, this is our existing mission, and we would propose to keep it, to enrich the community through lifelong learning and discovery. For a vision statement, and this would be new, because we currently do not have a vision statement, it would be a community connected to each other through lifelong learning and the transformative power of stories. For our core values as a librarian and as a team, and this was developed through feedback from our staff, our values would be integrity, literacy in learning, people-first service, inclusion and belonging, and teamwork. And we have come up with a tentative five areas of focus or goals, and you'll see, they have this convention, they're framed as, through this, we achieve that. So the first is leading through innovation. Through sustainable innovation and improvement, we thrive as a library and as a community. Celebrating reading and learning. Through books, hands-on learning, technology, and valuing different perspectives, we celebrate individual and collective stories. Connecting community. Through collaborations with people and organizations, we strengthen our community and extend our reach. Creating a culture of belonging. Through our team, collections, and services, everyone has a home at ACPL. And finally, designing functional, friendly spaces. Through accessible, intuitive, and easy-to-navigate physical and virtual spaces, our patrons discover all we have to offer. So we bring this for your discussion and your feedback, and to see if you think we're on the right track with this.
Any observations or comments?
My comments is, I think you're 100% on the right track. There's things here that are obviously more holistic, maybe is the word, but some of them are very practical as well, designing functional, friendly spaces, which I think, frankly, we need to work on, especially in our facilities master plan, and how we do those things. So I'm very much in favor of everything on here. Like you said, it's and, including everything, and then and, can we add this as well? Especially the culture of belonging, I immediately wrote down just what we said one session some time ago, "All are welcome," which I think is really important, that this library has that message, so. Those are my thoughts.
Any other thought? I had just one question.
Yeah.
I never understood why in our mission, we had and discovery. It follows learning, and I thought, learning is discovery. That's the English major in me.
It must be.
Just a comment, no big issue.
It's better than our previous one. I remember the previous missions when I first started, which I think is still in the main, engraved somewhere.
I think you're right.
In main, so.
Oh, if it's engraved, it can't be changed.
It is engraved.
All right, well, you have some feedback.
Okay, great, thank you very much, that's very helpful.
You're still on?
I'm still on. It says Susan had a meeting, I apologize for that. For my executive director's report, well, as you know, we are at the Shawnee Library, so thank you Shawnee Library for hosting us. Welcome to Shawnee. I will introduce Edith Helbert, who is here. She is the manager of our Hessen Castle branch, and she also, on an interim basis, is managing the Shawnee Library, so we are grateful for her dual role right now. And between the close of the regular session and the start of our executive session, she would love to take you on a very brief tour of Shawnee. So, thank you, Edith. We wrapped up summer learning at the end of July, and the numbers looked really, really good. More than 14,000 participants read over 8.5 million minutes, and our staff hosted more than 35,000 attendees at over 1,500 programs and events, and more than 14,200 individuals joined us for free lunches and snacks throughout the summer. So it was a very busy summer, lots of the community engagement. We were just thrilled with how the community came out to support us and the library in reading, but no rest for us, barely any rest, because as soon as we close the books on summer reading, it is back-to-school time, and we are thick in it. We have been very busy with targeted back-to-school outreach. Asha and her team put together a back-to-school marketing campaign highlighting library resources, and you have seen that in many media outlets in the community. We are doing a lot of school visits, meeting with teachers, with students, attending back-to-school nights, meeting with PTA organizations. We are continuing to grow our relationships with the homeschool community, which is growing and really depend on us, and we have planned many programs in the fall specifically with their needs in mind. And also with our updated circulation card policy that you approved back in December, I believe, now local teachers and students who live outside the county but attend or go to school here in Allen County are able to get a free library card. go to school here in Allen County are able to get a free library card, and we have been very intentional about getting that message out this back-to-school season. And finally, in something I didn't have on my bingo card for 2023, we will be partnering with the Tin Caps for a special promotion at the August 31 game to kick off National Library Card signup month in September, but what I wasn't expecting, I will be throwing out the first pitch. So I have some talents. Athletic prowess is not one of them. My husband kindly went out and bought a baseball, and we had some coaching sessions over the weekend, and for those of you gentlemen who have been married a long time, can you imagine teaching your wife how to pitch and how well that went? That's about how well it went, but he was very patient with me, and I will do my best not to embarrass myself or this organization. Yeah, we'll see if it's great or not.
Is this an afternoon game or evening game? Because I think I want to see this if I can.
It's an evening game during Thursday, Thursday, so.
Oh.
Yeah, there you go. Yes, yeah.
That's awesome.
Something.
And anything else?
That's enough, isn't it?
That's enough.
We got to get you a library jersey.
Actually, Asha wants to make me one without a bugger.
Oh, boy.
All right.
Which baseball team cap are you going to be wearing? Tin caps or something else?
I don't think I look good in baseball caps, Marty, but I do have a tin cap suit, t-shirt.
On that note, let's move to new business. Is there any new business that should come before this body? Public comment. Anybody live it? No? Boy. Well, without any new business or public comment, this part of the session is over. I'd entertain a motion, we adjourn.
So moved. So moved.
Second, all in favor, aye? Opposed, nay? We're done.
Thank you.